Oh, man. I just want to say thank you too. I know geopolitical things get the headlines and federal governments get the attention, but local governments matter too. So, thank you. Father, I thank you too for government. This was your idea. You've delegated your authority to some of us. We thank you for this town and what it means to us, the families we've got to raise here, the schools, the businesses, and our homes. Thank you for those who take charge of it. Give them grace to do their job, whether that's with a quorum tonight or we have to wait. Help them make good decisions that are good for the citizens and community that we have. And we thank you for this pilgrimage in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Nate.
Thank you all.
Oh, jeez, I'm so sorry about that. We'll give him a couple more minutes here.
He can answer text either.
I bet Larry's right. Larry, do you have a bigger number? And if he's not, usually he'll answer by use of text, so... So, do I call the meeting to order and just say we don't have a quorum, so we're not going to vote, but we're going to listen to public comment?
You can't.
Does that sound legal? I don't want to be illegal. So, I'm glad you're here because we've never had this before. So, being 7:00 PM, I'll call the meeting to order and ask you to join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Shirley, would you take the vote?
Mayor Hammond.
Yes.
Larry Lambert.
Here.
Mike Connell.
Here.
Jeff Fuller.
Bob Porter.
Kena John.
Here.
Jacob Harper.
Not having a quorum, we will not be doing any voting tonight, but we do have some people here to bring us information. And Tom Emery has to go on to another meeting, so I'm going to go out of the agenda and ask Tom to go ahead with his report.
Thank you, and I do appreciate you doing that. From the perspective of the county Board of Commissioners, I'm pleased to say that the courthouse has been, the work has been completed for the most part, and the circuit court, the treasurer's office, and the clerk's office, and the registered deeds have basically returned to their offices in the courthouse. There will be a grand opening. It's, last I heard, was early December. I don't know if you've heard any specific date yet.
That's what they're hoping for.
Now, they're waiting for some final, some sort of lighting to be delivered, to be installed before they have the grand opening, grand reopening. Also, last night, we had the first reading of next year's budget for the county, and that will be dealt with again next month. The commission, the county planning commission, which really doesn't affect you folks so much because you do your own planning and zoning, but they did, the county planning commission did pass last night an amendment to the county zoning ordinance dealing with renewable energy, which, that doesn't affect you directly, but what is a real significant happening on the state level last week was that the state legislature passed legislation that divests local government of the authority to zone, to site at least, with respect to renewable energy, both wind and solar energy. Now, I don't know that that would affect you here so much in the city, and I don't know frankly if you have a provision for renewable energy in your zoning ordinance, but this legislation, well, actually does two things, and they're interconnected. There's legislation that passed that said that by 2040, Michigan must have 100% of its electric generation based on renewable energy, which means wind or solar. I haven't seen the exact language, but I think what might be a saving grace in it is they talk about nuclear energy. Might also be, of course, nuclear energy has been on the outs for many years. It takes a long time to get them approved, but it's really questionable whether wind and solar alone would provide 100% of our electric generation by that time. But what the, at the last minute, so this legislation preempting zoning by local governments on renewable energy was passed last week. They did put in a few things, but I don't think it's any practical value for us. I think it really does, it puts authority to site these solar energy, I'm not going to call them farms because they're not agriculture, these solar facilities and wind facilities. It's, will be done, the decisions on that, citing them will be made by the Michigan Public Service Commission. Now, in another life, when I worked for the Attorney General, I spent a couple of years as attorney for the Public Service Commission. And if there's any state agency existing that I wouldn't want making decisions about where, what sort of facility is going to be near my residence, it would be the Public Service Commission. My, now, this is my personal opinion. That may be why they chose them. But also, it does allow, if, the state's going to set the standards for these facilities. And I say they don't affect you that much, but Perry Township, Woodhull Township in my district, other, you're probably aware that a lot of townships are really concerned about this whole issue, but it does allow them to pass a compatible, I think it's called a compatible ordinance. So, basically, the locality would have to have an ordinance, and if you decided to get into that business as well, you might be able to have some authority if your local ordinance tracks pretty much what the Public Service Commission ordinance was. So, this is a really significant issue that's got a lot of us riled up. And so, now, the legislation, I don't know if the governor signed it today, but she was going to sign it around this time, and it takes effect a year from now. Now, as a matter of fact, I was at the Morris Council Meeting the other night, and they, they didn't have anything in their zoning ordinance that covered, they, like you, do your own planning and zoning, they didn't have anything on renewable energy. So, they passed a moratorium on any projects in their jurisdiction until they can come up with an ordinance, even though it may be in effect for only, let's say it takes them six months to develop it. They passed a six-month moratorium, and then it'd be another six months, and then the state regulation would really be enforced. So, just to let you know what's going on in that field. And those are the biggest things that really, I, well, I should, I don't fear how much you're aware, but in Perry Township, over at Beersley Road and Church Road, there was an effort to restart a gravel pit, quite caught with some residences boarding it. And much to my consternation, our zoning department on the county level was going to let it go, and Perry Township objected strenuously. And I looked at it, and I don't want to get too much in the weeds on this, but legally, if you have a non-conforming use, they were going to approve it because they claimed it had previously been a gravel pit, and it was established before the county zoning ordinance was passed. Well, in a situation like that, a zoning ordinance can't take some of these property rights away. In other words, the right to use that as a gravel pit. But there's another legal concept that comes in, that if you don't use it for a period of time, it's called abandonment. And the, our county, I did not even consider that issue. And so, everybody's had an issue. And then, he did finally acknowledge that when he made that determination, he was looking at the wrong parcel of land, that indeed there had been no prior existing gravel pit on the land involved. What he looked at was another parcel.
Of Maitreel Row, proudly, huh?
Nearby. I don't know exactly, but nearby. So, anyway, so the county zoning board of appeals, I go into all this zoning stuff because that was one of my issues, ran for, when I ran for office. Of course, they didn't put me on the zoning committee or anything there, but it doesn't keep me from getting them out. But they, so, the zoning board of appeals denied the authority to reinstate that gravel pit on that property, and with that, there has been an appeal filed in the court, Circuit Court, which is the normal process, so they do have a right to appeal on that. Anyway, it's interesting, interesting stuff to me. I'm not so sure as to, except I do know you get involved in your zoning and you have...
Yes, we do.
And if there are any issues, don't hesitate, but you see from your perspective, don't hesitate to let me know.
Okay. Any questions for Tom Emery, anybody?
No.
Thank you for coming, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next guest, Caroline Wilson, from Chiauasi County. Welcome, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Welcome to the council and Shirley and to the new role.
A lot of new people.
Right. You guys have, yes, you did have some new people. And I just had a conversation with Shirley, and she's doing a good job. I know she's a little nervous about running the elections, but Devin and I had a conversation, and I've told her, she's got some groundwork, and she's, she's going to be okay. It's okay, one day at a time. So, I brought some new directors.
Thank you.
For anyone that's interested for your office, and then, like he said, the renovation is over, so that is really good to be back in our old space.
Okay.
I'm out reminding people that for CPL, for new CPLs, the fingerprinting is done in our office. It is no longer needed that you have to make an appointment with the Sheriff's Department. It's a one-stop shop, and so you can do that right in our vital records. We need about a half an hour of someone's time, and so that's just reminding people of that. And then, they're working on what they call the red flag law, so that if anyone has any kind of domestic violence or mental illness in their history at all, they are not permitted to purchase a gun. So, that's something that's in the works. But mainly, I'm out talking about the early voting. A lot of people didn't realize that proposal two and the impact that that was going to have, and the impact it's going to have is that elections are going to become very expensive. The nine-day early voting is something that I'm thrilled to announce, that all of our jurisdictions have come into an agreement with the county, except for the city of Owasso, which was expected because they have so many, they have a large, they have six precincts. And so, this constitutional change hasn't been in the election law since 1963, which is a long time. And so, the effects of it are just going to be numerous, and we're just taking one little chip at a time. Things will go into effect from the 14th forward 91 days, the new laws that they've passed just this past week on the 14th, all these different law changes. I started reading in the law yesterday about one thing, and now I can, I don't even know how I started reading because I got, say, down that rabbit trail looking for reading everything else. It's going to be a lot of changes for us, but the nine-day early voting is to permit constituents the availability to vote nine days early. So, it will start, I'll use the presidential primary February 27th date. People will be able to vote Saturday, the 17th, up through that Sunday, right before the primary, presidential primary, which would be the 25th. So, it's those nine days. It stops on Sunday to permit the Bureau to upload and get everything that's transpired in the nine days prior uploaded, so that when clerks start loading the election on election night, the Monday before, that everything that transpired in the last nine days is there, so there won't be any activity. So, we've all come into an agreement, and that's thrilling because a lot of counties, you have it one of two ways. Either the county is saying, I'm not touching it, it's not our responsibility, because it isn't our responsibility. This falls on the local municipalities. However, I'm thinking that just, how do some of these smaller jurisdictions man nine days of early voting, manning, and then staffing that for nine days? So, we came together with collaboration. I applied for a grant. If I get money for the grant, that will be 90, $70,000. That includes what City of Owasso is asking for, so that would be good. It puts everyone in one location. Centrally, for the Chiauasi County, that location is the Veterans Building in Corona, where we just were at for the temporary renovation. Now, we have the internet there. It's got a nice new parking lot. It complies with all the ADA complaint, you know, regulations we have to have, so it's beautiful. I approached the board and talked to them about charging rent, and I said, I don't think that, you know, it's right for us to charge. It, we're kind of all in this together, and so they agreed that we're not going to charge the locals' rent for that establishment. And so, that's where it will be. We have our hours that are going to be set. Notices will need to go out coming up soon. I have to look at our agreement to see. I do believe it's the locals that we put in there to make sure they did it because our feeling was it's their voters. Local clerks do have to have some skin in the game. They have to pick a day to be, to be on-call. They don't have to be there. We're going to have a chairman and up to four people for the presidential primary. So, it's just a lot of things in progress. And like I'm reminding my staff and the locals, this happened to all of us. The Bureau of Elections is under a lot of pressure, you know, the counties are under a lot of pressure, the locals are under a lot of pressure, so we're doing our best to comply with all the changes that are coming down the pike. And I don't think initially it's going to be something that, it's going to be crazy. All we have to compare voting to is one massive crazy day. So, nine days. And when you talk with other vendors and states that have the nine days or longer already in place, they're like, it's much different than what you have now. So, I'm thinking until voters start catching on to the early voting, that it's going to be something that will hopefully just be kind of like a nice breather, trying to get the gates worked out. I applied for the grant. The state is encouraging counties to go into agreements because they would probably like to deal with 83 counties as opposed to 1,500 to 1,600 municipalities. My thought behind it was, it's here to stay. It's a mandate, so why would we not try to get grant money to help us establish it? If something were to happen that the clerks can't do it, then the county, you know, we're meeting the mandate that it's already, that it's a constitutional mandate. I was also looking at, I didn't want to lose clerks. Well, that's not working out real well for me. I have five clerks right now that have told me they do not plan on running in 2024. And well, it's a lot. And so, what I've also been encouraging councils and board members is to look at their, what they pay their clerks and their deputies. And I said, even if you gave them a per diem on those even years, they have to be there more hours, mandated hours, they have to process more. There's so many law changes and so many things that have come on them and on us, that it's like clerks are saying, I didn't sign up for this. This is becoming too much. I don't get paid enough to do this. This is outside of my normal, most clerks, other than the cities, they have jobs outside. So, it's become a whole lot more for them. So, I'm advocating for them to be compensated for those hours because it is a lot, it's a lot of change. And so, this will take effect next year. We have agreed in our county to just do it for the even years, and this is if the federal or the state call an election. So, like if May of 2024, the state calls a special election, we have to be open for that nine days prior to that election. But it will be February, August, and November of 2024 for sure, and we're not doing it in odd years. Any questions? It's a lot.
Yeah.
But one day at a time is what I keep saying. And I said to someone, they asked how I was handling things, and I said, well, since my inception, I haven't known anything but crazy, so I'm just kind of taking it as it comes because I don't know any different. I mean, it's nice to be back in our office. Sure, that makes a big difference.
I imagine.
Yeah. But other than that...
Well, if we get any questions here, we'll just refer them to you.
Well, your office. I've told Shirley, you know, give me a call. I do plan on kind of doing a one-on-one or a smaller group of training, but right now, there are so many things happening.
Right.
And we've been waiting for the law to pass. We've been waiting for things from the Bureau, and they're pushing us right to the limit as far as things that we have to do.
And then, you weren't in your office, and you know, and all that makes, it makes it different, but now you're back there, so, yeah.
So, we go for a training. The counties have a training November 30th to December 1st, and it's nothing but elections. So, I'm hoping to learn more there, but the early voting site is not going to look like an elections precinct. It's going to have more than one tabulator, because what we learned at one of our conferences is that each tabulator cannot have more than 10, up to 10 precincts on it. We have 31. So, and you know, we got, no one thought about audits, no one thought about recounts, no one thought about the canvas. I mean, so when they were compiling all this information, they're like, boom, tabulators should not have more than 10. I asked for five tabulators. That way, I could have five precincts per tabulator. So, when a voter comes in, we're also going to be doing what we call a ballot on demand because we throw a lot of ballots away. And so, when a voter comes in, we'll swipe, we'll see what kind of ballot they need, we'll put a code in, and then we'll print the ballot out, up to 21 inches long, both sides, right there. So, that way, we're not, and if they spoil it, we just print another ballot. But ballots are expensive. Elections are expensive. And you can imagine, costs have gone up.
Right.
So, yeah, imagine that. So, yes, feel free to call if you have any questions, and it's a moving target, moving target.
Well, we appreciate the information. Does anybody have any questions for Caroline?
Um, Shirley said you're going to have a training, so you're going to have like a training for local clerks then?
Have you ever worked on EPD?
Uh, no.
Oh, right.
That's what I'm most worried about.
Well, so Lauren and I are trying to work out something that I do it on a much, like a smaller level, but I don't have the means, like I went to Grange County, so I'm trying to determine where I can set that up in our county. I have several newer clerks.
Okay.
And they're not familiar and that. And then, yes, I do do local clerk training as far as, well, the inspector training. That is coming up for the two-year certification. Clerks go to that. And then, you just tell me what you need, and I'm more than happy to, yeah, I get it. It's a ton of information.
Okay. All right. Yep, I'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy the rest of your evening. It's beautiful.
Yes, thank you. I think we're going to be out there enjoying it shortly. I see Robert Kittles here, and he was helping us quite a bit with the antique truck, the Ford truck. And I did not get a chance to talk to, what's his name?
Zach.
Zach. Do you know, Robert, anything about the truck, when it's going to actually go on auction?
They don't, but I can find out tomorrow. That's a little bit of a long way.
Okay, oh, okay. That'd be great. That would be great. So, no, I talked to our DPW super today because I thought maybe he had had conversation, but he hasn't had conversation with him either, so...
All right, I'll ask him tomorrow.
Okay. He called Shirley for some information, but the thing is, we don't have, I mean, it's just, so I know that's, when people look at the website on the auction site, they probably go, what?
Yeah, pretty much.
You know?
Yeah, the more words, the better.
Right, yeah. Maybe he could just say, we don't know anything about...
We don't know.
That's pretty much what he said.
Yeah, if you could.
Yeah, I'll ask him over there tomorrow.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. I did want to just report to you, if you remember at the last meeting, we did vote on the approval for up to $15,000 on the cleanup, but it wasn't on our agenda, so we were going to check with Justin. He said it's okay. The voting approving it was sufficient. We don't have to redo anything. It was approved. And I told Kevin that today too, so he's good with that. And then, I'll let you know too, on the tornado recovery, our status of donations, I can let you know that. PFCU branch right here in Perry did donate specifically toward the flagpoles in the VFW Pavilion area and the, whatever you call that, where you put the flagpole in the ground.
The bases.
The base, okay.
Wow.
Yeah, so that was a nice donation from them. They held a little ceremony right out here by the...
Rock.
By the US flag that's still there on Friday, and they had representatives from PFCU, and Larry was there, and Shirley, and Megan, so that was wonderful.
We had VFW representative there as well.
Oh, a VFW from PFCU, okay. Very good. So, that was good. I missed it myself, but I was out of town, so I apologize for that. And I thank Larry for filling in for me. As far as the rest of our donations, we have, together with that $11,294.85, a total of We do still have out there from our unanimous donor, a match up to $5,000, so that will, I think, be going into that fund as well. So, we're doing well. I did talk to Jeremy Black, who works at Representative Slotkin's office today. He called to tell me that they still are trying to find us money to apply for, and they think that we might be able to get some state grant money or legislative grant money from the state, even though we aren't qualified for federal FEMA money. But he said it will have to wait until January, until end of the new year, once the government reopens, because he thought they would be shut down, but anyway. So, I think that's all the reports that I had. Shirley, do you have anything you want to report?
I just want to remind everyone about the Christmas party on December 1st at Charlie's, and if you need RSVP, like...
Oh.
And then, I mean, if you're coming, you don't, you don't have to tell anybody.
That's a chance to put you on the spot.
If you're coming.
No, we're, we're going to be there.
Okay, and then, so...
Two after the fridge.
I'll get you with you later on that. So, and then, just the Christmas fantasy on December 9th from 5 to 8. I would, I mean, this wasn't really... I would, I mean, this wasn't really like a vote, but I do want to talk about the street corners that we, just so you guys are aware. Because I did look back, and it was never voted on, so I think it was just like, this is what we're planning on. So I'd just like to tell you. So we always close First Street between Main Street and Madison, I think the Queen House, for the horse drawn trailer. We would like to also close, oh geez, Second Street from, East Second Street, I'm sorry, West Second Street from Main Street to the alley. Because we have the kissing booth there and photo selfie station and, you know, a lot of traffic right through there. So we'd like to close that also. And then First Street to Second Street. So the alley for the, for the horse drawn carriage. I'm sorry, I'm like drawing up, like, not reading what I want, wanting to read. But so that's, that's just kind of the deal. So that's what we're planning on. And we have plans to start decorating the trees on Saturday afternoon, early afternoon, and then just have everybody ready to go at 5:00.
And the majority of things, for those of you that might not know, happen in the fire station. But there are things going on all over the downtown area. The scavenger hunt, the windows will be painted, the, lots of businesses are open and giving free cocoa and cookies and all sorts of stuff. It's a very fun night. Santa's available. Santa and Mrs. Claus are available to visit with the children. They'll be in the Baptist church. And we'll hold an opening ceremony in the parking lot behind the fire station about 5:15, 5:20. And then the band from the high school will be playing in the fire station through the evening. The choir will be singing in that same area. And there's a raffle. You don't buy a raffle. You just, like, we should call it a drawing. We've gotten in the habit of calling it a raffle, but it's a drawing. You put your name in the bucket, and your name gets drawn. You get a thing, whatever. Getting lots of donations from the local businesses for the prizes that will be given out. And there's lots of food. Most of it's free.
The other thing is, this year is, the Baptist church is letting us either use their, a room off of their sanctuary or the hallway there by their new coffee bar that they have. Like, Rite Aid is going to participate, so obviously people aren't going to walk all the way down to Rite Aid for whatever they're doing. So they're going to come, we're going to have some tables there for a few businesses that are going to participate this year that haven't in the past. So I'm not quite sure who they are other than Rite Aid, but I mean, Megan has planned to work with that, so.
The horse drawn wagon rides have always been very popular, and that will be here again this year. Santa and Mrs. Claus arrive on that at the fire station. And then the rides, after the opening ceremony is done, the rides will go on from there. And those are free.
And we have an ice sculpture going too.
Oh, that's right, an ice sculpture this year, so that'll be nice. So lots of good stuff. Counsel, is there anything other than what's on here that you want Shirley to put on for the agenda next meeting?
Everything that's on here right now.
Yeah, everything that's on here right now.
We've got a couple more proposed ordinance revisions. Is those coming back from Justin?
I actually just sent them tonight.
Okay.
So we just, yeah, so maybe for next week.
Maybe for the next time.
Yeah, that's what I asked him. So I did that right before I came down.
We do need to put on there a discussion regarding where the funds will go from the antique truck sale because we hadn't decided that yet. I don't have any further update on the vacant land sale. They're still talking with the county about what needs to be checked down there before it can be sold. And I think that's all we can do.
Well, I got one other reminder, and that is, we talked about Christmas fantasy. Just to remind everyone, and it's on the website, that the Christmas light judging contest or activity will happen on Tuesday, December 5th at 7:00 PM. We'll have people, past winners and as many council members as can attend are welcome to join. We basically drive through town, take notes, and have a little gathering in here afterwards and consents on the first top five prizes for participants within the city. So 7:00, Tuesday, December 5th.
That is lots of fun. Ron and I were able to get involved in that just once, but it was, we had a great time doing that. Going, driving around just to look at all the Christmas decorations. And everybody does such a wonderful job with that. They're just beautiful. And then just getting together afterwards, so it's very nice. And I will mention too, if anybody on council is interested in helping out at the Christmas fantasy, we do have a couple of areas where we need people to help us. We need help in the drawing, and there might be a couple other spots where we need some help. So if you're able to provide that, we appreciate that, and let us know, Shirley or Megan or I.
One more thing is that we're also doing Stuff the Hummer on that same night, so it'll be at Carl's. Or I think during the day.
Yeah, that's during the day. So Stuff the Hummer, and it's a food drive for the food bank. And you can bring something else, or you can go into Carl's and buy stuff and then stuff it in the Hummer. So any other discussion? 7:32, this meeting's adjourned.